5:59, we'll call to order the the city council meeting for October 21st. Lakeport, thank you. And the first item is the pledge of allegiance. Carl, would you be interested in leading that for us tonight?
Great.
Do you want to do actually roll call first?
Oh, my gosh, we jumped right in. I have to get acclimated. I was I was early. That was too weird with me.
Drew you off.
I thought I was going to be late, then I was early. All right. Can we get a roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Pro Tem Disney?
Here.
And Mayor Costa?
Here.
Please rise for the church of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and essence of all.
Thank you, Carl. Next item. Acceptance of agenda and any urgency items. Do we have any items to add?
We do not have any urgency yet.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Any council member may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda. Removed items will be considered following the consent calendar portion of this agenda. I'm going to read out the items on the consent agenda. We have waive reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per government code section 36934. Item B, approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of September 16, 2025, the special meeting of September 30, 2025, and the special joint meeting of September 30, 2025. C, approve the warrant register of September 22, 2025. D, approve a resolution rescinding Resolution 2996, 2025, and revising the master pay schedule to in conformance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. E, adopt the resolution accepting construction of the 2024 Water and Sewer Main Replacement Project by Gallati Construction Company and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. F, repeal and replace Resolution Number 3000, 2025, entering into a funding agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, CDFW, accepting grant funds and authorizing the city manager or public works director to execute all documents for the oil spill response equipment staging grant, Lake County. And G, approve application 2025-046 with staff recommendations for voter parking. Does any council member wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? Hearing them, is there any comments from the public on any of those items? No one in the room. How about online?
No hands.
Thank you very much. So we'll bring it back to council for the motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries. Okay, we're at public presentation and request. Item A, public input. So this is the time when any person can speak briefly about any subject within the authority of the city council, provided that the subject is not already on tonight's agenda. Per government code 549, 54 dot 3A, the city council cannot take action or express a consensus of approval or disapproval on any public comments regarding matters which do not appear on the printed agenda. So this is the sort of free form part of the meeting. Any items that anyone would like to speak about tonight? This is the time to do it, and we can listen, but we can't really take any action or make comment. So do we have anyone who wants to speak on non-agended items? No one in the room. How about online?
No hands.
All right. So we'll close the public input portion of the hearing and move forward. Item B, presentation, the climate action plan. Presentation by Lake County Community Development Department on the climate action plan. Yeah, huh. Hello.
Well, thank you for having me tonight, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Shannon Walker Smith. I'm the deputy community development administrator for the county of Lake. And hopefully, this is not the first time you've been hearing about this enormous project that we have undertaken called Lake County 2050. It's the update of our general plan, all eight local area plans, and this climate adaptation plan, which it is a climate adaptation plan rather than action. So if we could have that corrected as well. We have been working on this project for about a year and a half. And we are, the climate adaptation plan is part of Lake County 2050, but it's on a different timeline due to some grant funding that we have with the RCD and the RRA. And so we are wrapping up this portion of the project by June, sorry, by January 30th. And so we're in our final phase here, kind of pushing to the end. This climate adaptation plan has been in collaboration with both cities. And so we're here tonight to give you an update on the status of this plan as well as allow for some brief discussion about your most urgent kind of thoughts on what should be included in the plan. Additionally, we have been outdoing a ton of community engagements. I'm on a tour of all the municipal advisory councils. We've done multiple stakeholder meetings, and we held a meeting between city and county staff, department staff, to talk through some of the goals and actions as well. So we've been gathering a lot of input, and that input will be included in the next draft of the plan, which will be the public draft that will be out for public review, which we hope to have available in likely early December. I have our Placeworks consultant online. I'm not sure if she could be escalated to Pam, Ms. Jocelyn. And she's going to go through a few slides and give you a more detailed update, and then we'll open it up for a bit of discussion.
Get this. Oops, sorry. Do you want the controller? Is she going to use the control?
Do other things. Yeah. That's it.
There you go. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, sorry.
Good evening, Jacqueline.
Good, Shannon.
Hi, all. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So it looks like you have, you already have the slides up, so I'll just say next slide as I go, if that works.
Thank you.
And thank you, Shannon, for the brief introduction. And good evening, council members. Next slide. So here's the agenda for this presentation. It is quite comprehensive, covering what we've done to date and what the contents of the cap will be. So we'll start with introduction to the project team, provided overview of the adaptation plan, summarize the process and results of the climate vulnerability analysis, go over the pillars of landscape resilience, and then go over the next steps in the process. Next slide. So this project is being led by county staff through the Community Development Department and Office of Climate Resilience in partnership with the cities of Clear Lake and your city of Lakeport and the Lake County Resource Conservation District. My name is Jacqueline Posman-Ror with Placeworks. I'm the project manager on the consultant team, and I'm joined on Zoom tonight by Tammy Seal, the principal in charge on the consultant team as well. Next slide. So to start off with a bit of background on the project, this effort began with the establishment of the Community Risk Reduction Authority in 2018, and then the formation of the Lake County Office of Climate Resiliency in 2022. The Community Risk Reduction Authority, in coordination with the Office of Climate Resilience, adopted the Pillars of Landscape Resilience in 2023. And then later that same year, Lakeport, in partnership with the County Resource Conservation District and City of Clear Lake, were awarded the California Adaptation Planning Grant for the Equitable Climate Safe Lake Project. In 2024, the project team began developing the climate vulnerability analysis, a county-wide evacuation study, and the climate adaptation plan concurrent with the Lake County 2050 general plan update. Next slide. And one more. So I'll go, I'll now go through an overview of the adaptation plan. So the goal of the climate adaptation plan is to develop a roadmap for building climate resilience across Lake County, including the city of Lakeport. In the context, and in the context of this plan, adaptation means making changes in response to current or future conditions, usually to reduce harm and take advantage of new opportunities. And then resilience means the ability for communities to withstand, recover, and learn from past disasters to strengthen future response and recovery efforts. So this process identified the most vulnerable communities, natural systems, and built assets through the climate vulnerability analysis. And the strategies and actions in the adaptation plan itself will integrate with the existing pillars of landscape resilience to create a cohesive approach for resilience across all sectors. The plan will provide practical and feasible solutions to reduce climate risks, considering existing resources, gaps, and capacity constraints with clear pathways for implementation. Next slide. So this plan is being developed based on the four-step process outlined in the California Adaptation Planning Guide. Sorry, the first phase, the project team initiated the process by defining the scope of the vulnerability analysis. Phase two was focused on the, on assessing the vulnerability or the degree to which populations and assets would be affected by climate change hazards with the climate vulnerability analysis as the main product of this phase. We're currently in phase three of the process, which focuses on defining the adaptation framework, which are the pillars of landscape resilience, and developing strategies and actions for each of those pillars. And then the next phase, phase four, will focus on implementation. Where funding will be secured for programs and actions in the plan, implementation will be monitored, and the plan may be adjusted over time to account for capacity and the needs of the community. Next slide. The climate adaptation plan is intended to be a living document that supports other plans and programs, and therefore integrates with several other plans to do so. The Lakeport General Plan can use the climate vulnerability analysis to inform long-term climate resilience policies and programs. The climate adaptation plan can use the Community Wildfire Protection Plan to coordinate wildfire fuel reduction projects and evacuation route protections. The Multi-Djurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan can act as a tool to implement the adaptation plan with the CAPS' long-term climate-focused strategies and the MJHMP's near-term hazard reduction projects updated about every five years. The Capital Improvement Plan can also act as an implementation tool with the climate vulnerability analysis and strategies and forming infrastructure planning projects for resilience. And then the drought resilience plan is a topic-focused plan supporting over 80 small water systems throughout Lake County. And the CAP can provide a broad framework for implementing drought preparedness strategies. And finally, the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation of Clear Lake provides recommendations for rehabilitating Clear Lake, which can be incorporated into the adaptation plan to support the economy, ecosystems, and heritage of the area. Next slide. So I'll briefly go over the vulnerability analysis. To start off with, what is a vulnerability analysis? According to the California Adaptation Planning Guide, the primary guidance document for these types of studies across the state, a vulnerability analysis is an assessment of how changing climate may harm a community and which elements are most vulnerable to its effects. So the project team used a four-step process for evaluating vulnerabilities. Step one, identify exposure to hazards. Step two, analyzing the sensitivity of populations and community assets and the potential impacts of those hazards. Third step, evaluating adaptive capacity, which is the ability of populations or community assets to prepare for, respond to, and recover from hazards using existing resources. And then the last step brings all of those pieces together to assess overall vulnerability. Next slide. The vulnerability analysis evaluated 91 different population groups and community assets across both unincorporated Lake County and the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake, and how vulnerable each of those were to eight different climate change hazards. These hazards are listed on the slide and include agriculture and forestry pest diseases, drought, extreme temperatures, flooding, human health hazards, landslides and debris flows, severe weather, and wildfire and smoke. Next slide. So these are the key findings from the vulnerability analysis. We found that wildfire and smoke create the most vulnerabilities across all sectors. The most vulnerable populations are people of color and immigrant communities, financially constrained households, those with chronic illnesses or disabilities, older adults, people with high outdoor exposure, such as unhoused persons or outdoor workers, and persons in tribal communities. And then the most vulnerable community assets are energy and communication infrastructure and services, homes, especially older and manufactured homes, transportation infrastructure, including both state highways and local roads, agriculture as an economic driver, and then outdoor recreation and tourism as an economic driver. City and county staff contributed to and reviewed the climate vulnerability analysis at each step in the process, and the report is now posted to the Lake County 2050 website. And we have, oh, next slide. We have received some feedback from community, from the community related to the climate vulnerability analysis. These are a few quotes from one of the open-ended questions asking the community members for their ideas for resilience in Lake County. We heard the importance of rehabilitating Clear Lake, undergrounding electrical lines, and regular controlled burns, and the use of cattle and livestock grazing to limit fuel for wildfires. For populations, we heard making local homeownership a priority and ensuring all voices are heard and considered in the process. For specific ideas, we heard finishing the Middle Creek floodplain and wetland reconnection, and then creating microgrids at water plants, shelters, and emergency operations center. And then more recently, the project team has facilitated several stakeholder discussions, as Shannon was saying, hosted a Community Risk Reduction Authority Town Hall, and held city and county department staff coordination meetings to get their input on successes, gaps, and potential adaptation solutions. So we took the results from the climate vulnerability analysis and integrated them into the existing pillars of landscape resilience, which I'll briefly go into. Next slide. Adopted in 2023, the Pillars of Landscape Resilience Framework is based on the Central Sierra Initiative with feedback from local tribe members, and the images for the pillars were adapted to better reflect Lake County. The framework recognizes the interdependence of ecological and social systems and provides metrics for measuring progress towards ecosystem and community resilience. Next slide. There are 10 pillars total representing desired landscape outcomes. Again, these are listed on the slide and include air quality, biodiversity conservation, carbon sequestration, economic diversity, fire-adapted communities, fire dynamics, forest resilience, social and cultural well-being, water security, and wetland integrity. Next slide. So each of the two components that I discussed above are being incorporated into the adaptation plan, and I'll now provide an overview of that. The plan itself covers, again, the unincorporated areas of Lake County along with the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport. It will be organized by the pillars of landscape resilience and will also have a long-term planning horizon similar to that of a general plan. The plan will contain background sections summarizing the climate vulnerability analysis, and then local knowledge and lived experiences from the community engagement across the cities and county. The resilient strategies and actions will be based on the pillars of landscape resilience, identifying feasible solutions that provide multiple benefits wherever possible. And then we also recognize the great work that's already happening across the cities and the county, and therefore will highlight existing partnerships and programs wherever possible. Next slide. The resilient strategies are organized by goal, strategy, and action. The goals are broad outcomes or end states describing desired future conditions. The strategies are policies, programs, and approaches to achieving the goal. And then the actions are implementation steps for each strategy. Each action also contains more detailed information for implementation, including responsible and supporting agencies, general timeframes, cost estimates, and potential funding sources. Next slide. So the adaptation plan will contain one goal per pillar and will include the following, and these are in draft form. For air quality, advancing community resilience to smoke and poor air quality events. Biodiversity conservation, the network of native species and ecological communities is healthy, abundant, and distributed across the landscape. Carbon sequestration, enhance carbon sequestration capacity across forests, ag and working lands, and wetlands. Economic diversity, a sustainable and resilient natural resource-based economy. Fire-adapted communities, fire-prepared and resilient communities with a capacity to manage desired fire and suppress unwanted fire. Next slide. Fire dynamics, fires burn in ecologically beneficial and socially acceptable ways. Forest resilience, resilient forest ecosystems that provide essential ecosystem services, support cultural heritage, and sustain economic opportunities. Cultural, social and cultural well-being, a community connected with nature to recreate, maintain, and improve overall health. Water security, reliable, safe, and equitable access to clean potable water. Wetland integrity, protected and restored wetlands and riparian ecosystems that provide essential ecosystem services. Next slide. So this slide shows example strategy concepts for the four different pillars. Under biodiversity conservation, we have strengthening habitat connectivity, developing and expanding the invasive species management program, protecting aquatic habitat and water quality. Under water security, we have water quality monitoring, water supply infrastructure and emergency coordination, and then drought resilience for the most vulnerable populations. For social and cultural well-being, we have, and these are just concepts, integrating public health into emergency planning, expanding access to climate resilience resources, such as resilience hubs, and then strengthening tribal co-management of natural resources. Under economic diversity, support climate resilient ag practices, foster healthy and sustainable tourism and recreation, and ensure equitable access to hazard-preparedness materials for small businesses. And then next steps. Next slide, yeah. This shows the overall CAP development timeline. So as mentioned previously, the project began in 2023 with outreach associated with the Lake County General Plan Update occurring in 2023 and 2024. The climate vulnerability analysis was completed earlier this year and again is now available on the Lake County 2050 website. We are currently in the plan development phase, conducting outreach and engagement activities, and then drafting strategies and actions for the plan. And then once adopted, the plan, the implementation phase will begin, which will likely be this winter and beyond. Next steps, or next slide. As far as next steps, we'll also be releasing the climate adaptation plan for review by local tribes before the formal public review period. And then we'll be holding other study sessions with the Clear Lake City Council on November 6, and the Lake County 2050 General Plan Advisory Committee and Local Area Plan Advisory Committees on October 27. And we also encourage you and community members to visit the project website at lakecounty2050.org. Next slide. So we are hoping to get your input on the climate adaptation plan this evening and therefore have this discussion question for your council to consider. The question is, what are your biggest concerns related to implementing climate hazard mitigation, adaptation, or resilient strategies in Lakeport?
Thank you, Jacqueline, so much for that presentation. So we'll just open it up now to the council, and then we can open it to the public. If you have anything that you would like to see reflected in the public draft.
Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, just, I would like to begin by just thanking community development staff, Shannon in particular, and, you know, Director Turner and Placeworks staff. It was, this has been on the list for quite some time. It's kind of a weird, kind of perverse, kind of set of circumstances. You know, we've always worn as a badge of courage and, or a badge of honor that, you know, we've had and been in attainment on all of our air quality goals and implementation things for quite some time. Many places, in fact, most places are not. And they've been required to do, you know, some of these climate action plans just as a virtue of being out of compliance. We have not, and unfortunately, over time, as everybody else has done these plans, this has become a prerequisite for a lot of funding streams and other things that are out there, especially at the state level and to some extent at the federal level as well. And we haven't had, you know, these opportunities to do these studies. And so it's great that now we're finally getting this one, kind of checking it off of our list and putting it into place so that hopefully we can go after those mitigation monies. And further to that point, I was very appreciative of the integration with the other plans, slides, as your council is aware. We've, we've done a lot of work. We just brought to you the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, which this fits really closely in. Also, the county's been leading on an evacuation, a county-wide evacuation study, and I know APC has been also doing some evacuation route mapping and pieces. So all of these things do sort of tie in together, and we're very hopeful of taking this plan to that next step and as staff going after some of those funding streams that are available, that this is a prerequisite too. So I just wanted to lead with that, and thank you for the efforts of getting us, getting us closer and closer to the finish line here.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good points, council members. Any questions, comments?
Well, the, I love the idea of going after funding, and I love like 98% of it. But I really understand that what I consider to be a partisan thing, that when you talk about carbon sequestration and climate change, is that something that's just assumed and that that is happening, and we all have to just swallow the idea that there's some kind of, you know, global warming or cooling or whatever? Is that, it doesn't seem to be a major part of the plan, but it concerns me when something so partisan is, you know, you know, electric vehicles and no gas, powered equipment and things like that. That's, to me, that's a slippery slope when, you know, there's varying scientific data. But the current administration in California is really pro-climate change, and I believe it's like a colonial, imperialistic, oppressive way to go after foreign countries and people. I just, that's the only thing I'm a little worried about, is the climate change being a, you know, like something, it's just a foregone conclusion and consensus, you know, that it's safe and effective kind of a thing.
We've been pretty deliberate about leaving the term climate change out of these documents, because we are really trying to garner support from our entire community. But climate adaptation is something that we must do, right? That there are, there are things happening, especially around wildfires, and that we, that are undeniable. And so we have to learn to how to adapt to, you know, our new climate. And so that's what this plan is, aims to do.
Yeah, well, one other thing, there is some question about wildfires being entirely all wildfires, as we've seen in Lahaina. That was allegedly a wildfire in a tropical paradise where all the ships and boats in the harbor were burned and cars were melted to the ground. So there is some question about all wildfires being wildfires, and it's been documented by, you know, herbologists and forensic scientists that said that there's a lot of fires that are very suspect. So I, and I understand that fires are a problem. But the fact that So I, and I understand that fires are a problem, but the fact that we have fires and, you know, tropical paradises and we're just accepting that it's a fire caused by, you know, climate change or just happened, you know, to be in Hawaii, you know, right on the coast is. So that, those are the kind of things that make me nervous because there's been a lot of evidence, there's been fires that are very suspect. And it's been brought about by even a citizen of, of, uh, this town and others that question whether all the wildfires are actually wildfires. When you're melting windshields, when that's 2,200 degrees and wildfires only get to 1,500, 1,600, so. But I'm, I'm really pleased with the fact that you've avoided using that term. But then again, wildfires are another thing that's very suspect in a lot of areas. And this one forensic arborist said that he went on 167 trips and 43 out of 46 fires, he was absolutely convinced they were not wildfires. And so when we are forced as citizens to mitigate and do all these things based on alleged wildfires, that's just another thing that I kind of hold back. That I feel like, well, maybe they're wildfires, maybe not.
I think the aim of this plan is to talk as a community about how we can recover from the events that we have had in our community and any future events that may occur.
Oh, oh, were you gonna?
Well, I was gonna just thank you, Shannon and Jacqueline for, uh, the presentation. I think that that's a very well-thought-out plan. To answer the question that was on the slide, Kevin kind of answered it because my main concern with implementing a plan like this would be the funding and how to, how to have that funding behind it, but, but Kevin really explained the, how this plan can be a prerequisite for some of those funding streams. Um, I guess my only question about it is, uh, kind of relating to Lakeport's general plan update that is going to be coming in the near future. Do we have a climate adaptation section in the general plan? Is this something that we would put in directly or what, what would that kind of look like?
This, this would likely become an appendancy to any future general plan, um, update. And yeah, because it was done at that regional scale. We looked at this several years ago at, in regards to, um, doing one for Lakeport on its own. It just didn't make any sense to, to do it outside of, of the regional context because they're, you know, they, they're so overlapping. So we were very excited to see when this opportunity came in. Uh, the county was successful in getting some funding and adding it to their general plan update. So yeah, it certainly would, uh, you know, kind of, uh, become an appendancy to any update, uh, that we have. Because a lot of these things are, uh, state, uh, requirements, uh, to be included in any, uh, future general plan update as well. So this, this is all, you know, kind of going forward into, into that effort as well. So it won't be, it won't be something that we have to do again.
Perfect. Well, and it just seems like a plan like this makes a lot more sense as a regional effort rather than a localized city effort. So thank you for everything. It looks, it looks great from the presentation.
Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to it. It's a beautiful report and I feel lucky that we were able to be a part of it and everything's falling into place. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, I, I agree. Thank you so much for the effort and for the fine product. And I guess I wanted to recognize a couple of things that have already been said, um, and I'll start. I appreciate Councilmember Parlay, you always bring up, you know, well, you often bring up, let's think sometimes out, I don't want to say outside the box, but from a different point of view that, because we don't want to always assume that, um, we, we want interventions that are tackling the right problems. So, and, and we find ourselves, the world's big and there's a lot to know. So we, we work on the best information we have, uh, and we're working in a context of, yes, we live in the state of California, it's going to make certain mandates. So we have all these things that are bearing on us. I think in the, in the midst of that, we're trying to say, how do we do well by the, by our climate, by our, our natural resources, et cetera? And I appreciate that the plan is attempting to focus very well on that. And, um, so to Kevin's point, how we had high, we had good ratings, so we weren't forced previously into various things. But this plan, having to do it, needing to do it, being able to do it for funding, et cetera. It provides the opportunity, of course, is quite comprehensive. I appreciate that it is focusing on fire recovery and to the extent that we understand wildfire. If we're correcting our actions, we'll get some movement there. Um, the wetlands, uh, I appreciate that we're looking at that because that's very specific to our area. This is something that's important to our, uh, our, um, natural resources, our natural environment, and, um, just our, sort of our culture here. And I appreciate the, um, the tribal consultation and the, and that's going on there. I think our tribal communities have a lot to offer. They've been thinking about some of these things and working on these things, uh, for a long time. So I think that's beautiful. I think what I might, it's not really a concern though, it, for any plan like this, it's very comprehensive. It's very large. It's connecting with other things. How, how do we help make sure? I, I'd just like to find a way, how do we action this? How do we help make sure that we have those seemingly small tangible steps that we can identify and we go forward in this degree and forward? Because it's quite broad and beautiful. It is. I think no issue with it. Um, but it's very, it's not uncommon when large plans are, um, difficult to lift off the ground because we get a little, um, stymied on how to make progress. And then this plan connects with so many others that that may also affect the ability to move forward. So I'd love to hear anything you have to say about that. I'm just putting it out there that I think that's the challenge.
Right. I agree. This is a long-ranging plan, so the goals, actions, and strategies are going to be maybe a bit more broad than what we're seeing in some of the other plans. I think that, um, but, but there is a real intent to make the actions actionable. Um, with some, um, designation of what agencies will, uh, take the lead on certain actions, um, potential funding sources and those kinds of things. So there's some detail in this plan that I think will help, uh, propel it. Um, but additionally, those other plans like the Hazard Mitigation Plan that now is multi-jurisdictional. Those are going to be the plans that are more the short-range, short-term strategies, um, in terms of, you know, recovery from events and, um, preparation and, and, um, actions in, in events. So there's other plans that are more short-range and this one is a little bit more broad, but also we're hoping to make it actionable. That is, has a long, um, range timeline like the general plan.
Very good. Thank you.
No, can I say one more thing? That the other thing that I had a little issue with, I've, I've heard numerous presentations and maybe somebody could help me out with the guy that did it. But he did a presentation called The Sick Lake. Um, I, I kind of take issue with the fact that they use the term rehabilitate the lake when it's like the number one bass lake and, and I've been driving by it the last three years and it's been absolutely impeccable and beautiful and very little algae and things like that. So I just have a little issue with rehabilitation. Sounds like something is harmed. I, I would rather see something like improve the already great Clear Lake. Because rehabilitation sounds like somebody is sick or in harm. And if you listen to this gentleman numerous times, he's sent into the chamber, he's probably given to the city council, and I can't remember his name, but, um, it, it's not a sick lake. Obviously, we're not the number one bass lake by bass masters in the state and one of the, like the fifth in the world. So it's not, it doesn't need rehabilitation. They probably see, leave it alone. So that's another thing that kind of bugs me just a little bit. And that was brought up twice, I think, rehabilitate Clear Lake.
Yeah, there's a committee, uh, uh, there is reference in our presentation is a committee that already exists in the county to look at options for, I think it's, um, more about, um, trying to restore the lake back to its more natural state.
Middle Creek Restoration and Flood Control Project, yes. I've been behind that for 40 years.
Admit, and you know, words matter.
Naturally.
Words matter, right? So maybe maintaining optimum health or something like that.
Yeah, I, I just, I take issue with that.
Great.
If you're referencing Dr. Harry Lyons.
Say what it was. Thank you.
Said, he has a song about it. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to see his presentation. I adore him, if you're listening, Harry. Um, he says Drake is not sick, it's fat. And he's a diet.
Thank you for that.
Any other, uh, questions or comments from council? All right, we'll open it up to the public to, uh, put forward questions or comments.
And this is really also an opportunity for you to, um, provide input. Strategies, actions, goals that you'd like to see included in the public draft. So if there are any, um, things that you'd like to see us include, please let us know, speak up.
Can we get back to you if it comes to us?
That's what I was gonna say. I wish I had a review before.
Certainly can. If you want to email me, um, with your input for the public, um, we have a comment card on county2050.org site. And take input in part of the plan. Comment card, it would be probably helpful if you learned that this is about the Climate Adaptation Plan. Um, but if there's, if you, to provide input on this plan before it goes to public draft, um, that you don't have an opportunity to speak tonight, you can send a comment card.
We'll make sure to, I'll forward that whole document to council.
So you don't see anybody in the room who's, um, has a comment? Anybody online?
No hands.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks, Shannon.
Shannon. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Public hearing's consideration of City of Lakeport joining Sonoma Clean Power. So I'm going to read the, the two items that are on the agenda and then, um, I'm gonna start with that. Item one, adopt the resolution requesting that the Sonoma Clean Power Authority act as the community choice aggreg- aggregator. Uh, aggregator for the City of Lakeport and authorize the implementation of Sonoma Clean Power's community choice. The second, um, item was to introduce and renew the first reading of the ordinance authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program within the City of Lakeport and approving the city's participation in the Sonoma Clean Power Joint Office Authority. City Manager Kevin Ingram?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Um, as your council is aware, the city has been exploring participation in, with Sonoma Clean Power, um, alongside the County of Lake and the City of Clear Lake, uh, for several months now. Uh, with this current reiteration, I mean, that the original kind of efforts in moving forward with Sonoma Clean Power go back, um, to 2015. Uh, the city, um, has had an opportunity to review feasibility studies, uh, have workshops and engage with, uh, with both Sonoma Clean Power and other regional partners uh, to evaluate the potential benefits and implications of, uh, joining a community choice aggregation program. Um, I believe the presentation to your city council, uh, directly from Sonoma Clean Power, uh, was on June 17th of this year. And then we also held a joint meeting recently with the County Board of Supervisors and the City of Clear Lake, um, on September 30th. Um, I will note that there were some developments today that do, uh, will change kind of the action that's going to be, uh, you know, proposed to you this evening. Uh, the Board of Supervisors, um, in taking up this matter themselves earlier today, um, did not have sufficient votes to move forward with joining, uh, Sonoma Clean Power. Um, unlike, uh, Clear Lake's efforts, um, in early October, they did not vote, um, to, um, to not join. Um, but actually kind of, um, had some questions that they still had and, um, made, that they did not move forward with a request to join Sonoma Clean Power, but instead directed, uh, county staff, uh, to continue to, to look at getting some of those questions answered and also further to explore, um, your potential, you know, partnerships and, um, you know, a more in-depth kind of cost-benefit analysis uh, compared to the potential of maybe joining other, uh, CCAs, um, that, that exist. Um, so at this time, um, you're speaking with Sonoma Clean Power, and I know that both, um, that we have a couple of representatives from Sonoma Clean Power uh, joining us, um, on Zoom here this evening, they can certainly, uh, provide some additional information. Um, but at this time, uh, the offer that, uh, Sonoma Clean Power made was contingent, um, upon, you know, all three entities, you know, Clear Lake, the county, and Lakeport joining. Um, even when Clear Lake did not move forward, uh, the Sonoma Clean Power said they were going to still take a recommendation uh, to their board to continue to move forward with the county and, uh, Lakeport if there was still strong support. Given the board's action, uh, the Board of Supervisors' action today not to move forward, uh, there really is no offer currently from Sonoma Clean Power. It's not something that they can viably move forward with, with just the City of Lakeport. Uh, so, uh, this evening, um, we're, we're asking, you know, not to, to move forward at this time with, uh, the resolution um, and the ordinance as presented in the staff report. Uh, but instead, I do believe there is strong value in continuing to, to work with Sonoma Clean Power and, um, and look at, you know, a potential future partnership with them. And then also I think it would be prudent, um, to provide direction to staff to continue to work with the county and make sure that we're a part of any of those, uh, discussions, uh, that they're having, um, in regards to, you know, other alternatives that they're considering. Um, there was no definitive sort of timeline, uh, that was presented, uh, specifically, uh, today. But we do know, um, from our discussions with Sonoma Clean Power in the past, that, you know, there, there are specific CPUC rules on how, uh, these things move forward and, and how you can join. So if we did take action and, and all three entities did move forward, um, I think the, the earliest that we would be coming online, uh, to Sonoma Clean Power would be in May of 2027. The next opportunity, uh, for this would, uh, be, you know, probably next year, which means that the earliest that we potentially would be looking at joining a CCA would probably be in May of 2028. However, like I said, that was not clear, um, uh, today in the board action. I'm sure there'll be some, some further discussion on it when staff, um, has a chance to take a look and do some additional analysis, um, on what those steps were. But it would be my recommendation, uh, to your council that we not move forward with, with this action, um, at this time. But continue to, to work with, uh, Sonoma Clean Power and also, uh, with the county and exploring those options. Uh, so, um, like I said before concluding, I, I definitely do want to extend, um, our sincere thank you to Sonoma Clean Power and their team. I know that they put a lot of effort, a lot of, uh, resources, um, into this effort. Um, the completion of the feasibility study, uh, that they provided to us, I, I think I know was in, in the, uh, in the neighborhood of about $40,000. Um, that is an expense that Sonoma Clean Power took on, um, on their own. Um, it was not a cost to, um, any of the entities. Um, I do know that their staff, um, has come up on several occasions, uh, you know, twice directly to us, but also to a number of other entities around Sonoma Clean, uh, around, around Lake County. Uh, so we're very thankful for their efforts and we, we do hope that, uh, despite, you know, not moving forward at this time, that they will still continue um, to, to consider us, um, in the future. And, um, and with that, like I said, um, I believe both, uh, Jeff Seifert, who's the Executive Director of Sonoma Clean Power, is joining us with Zoom. He's available to answer questions. Um, also Brian Barnacle, uh, who's a Sonoma Clean Power, uh, board member and, uh, from the, the fine city of, uh, Petaluma, my hometown. Uh, I think he's also, um, online, um, as well, uh, and available to, to answer questions. Just to know, I think, you know, kind of for some baseline action for those that may have not seen the board meeting today. Some of the, some of the issues that were brought up, um, by board members were in regards to kind of just some, some general risk questions in joining, uh, you know, kind of the permanency nature and, you know, if there was a decision, you know, to remove, um, you know, the county at any time, you know, there were some concerns about the costs associated with that. Um, as was addressed in the joint meeting that, uh, we were a part of, uh, there were some concerns in regards to, uh, the GEO Zones, um, initiative and, um, you know, some, some information there. And then also, uh, there was some direction, like I stated, that was given to staff to potentially look at, uh, what are the kind of costs or benefits, what are options exist with other CCNA's, uh, before, you know, jumping, uh, directly, um, in with, uh, Sonoma Clean Power. Uh, so certainly able to answer questions, but like I said, uh, we do also have Sonoma, Sonoma Clean Power representatives here this evening to, to help answer questions.
And Jeff has, uh, raised his hand, so I'll go ahead and allow him to talk. Go ahead, Jeff. Where did he go?
We lose him. Let's see, can you hear me?
There you are.
Yes. There we are. Thank you so much and, and thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, uh, Kevin Ingram. Uh, you have been a delight to work with. Um, I think for this moment, it's a little bit sad. Um, it's sad the supervisors have deprived you of the option of giving your city the choice to trim energy costs and fight for more clean power. Um, after 10 years of requests from Lake County, starting in 2015, uh, and three rounds of Lake County requests to us for service. I am getting a little confused about Lake County's genuine interest, so I'll be candid tonight. Um, we spent, uh, between the two feasibility studies. We spent, between the two feasibility studies we've done, almost $90,000 at the expense of ratepayers in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. So I, I, I think you're hearing me with my gripes and I, and I apologize about that. On tribal outreach, I did wanna just circle back because your mayor made some really good points earlier in, in our discussions. And back in April of this year, our, our tribal liaison reminded me that we had asked the county and the chair of the supervisors to introduce us to local tribes, to inform the county's vote, and we ended up getting no response to that request. That was probably because it didn't feel urgent. So I don't wanna cast blame, but it also meant we ended up getting into a situation where we were seen as salespeople from the outside and not implementers of your program. And I think where we have to get to, if this ever moves forward in the future, is we really have to get to a point where we are implementers of your direction. Like, I don't think this works in Lake County without that sensibility. So the last thing I'll share before I maybe ask if, if you're willing to hear from our board chair as well, Brian Barnacle, is that Lake County, referencing the prior item, Lake County has no current state-designated disadvantaged community status. And that has a lot to do with your good work to protect air quality. But the state's current practice of those designations completely ignores wildfires, absolutely ignores wildfires altogether. It only looks at highway diesel emissions and other kinds of things like that. And so I wanted to raise that because the last item you just heard was relevant to this and the best thing that we can do is fight for, fight for you, like, and, and change the rules. So if we can change the disadvantaged community protocol so that you can actually get access to state funding that you don't have access to now, like Stockton has in Fresno, because your air quality is not the only issue we should be looking at, then I think that's, that's the kind of thing we do. So I think I'll, I'll just conclude there, but really, the, the most important thing I can do is just express my thanks for all the support I've received from your council and from your staff. And I hope the door can stay open. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We would welcome hearing from Brian if he has something to share. There he is. I know, he moves it one. Okay, go ahead, try it, Brian.
Hey, can you hear me all?
Yes.
Hey, I just wanna say, good evening and thank you for your consideration. I think Jeff summed up sort of the positions well. You know, in the future, should we look to this again, the, the thing that's most important to us is that you're leading the outreach and you're, you're the ones that, you know, I, I said it at the supervisors' meeting today, sorry, my dog's losing her mind here, that we don't wanna be the salesman. We wanna be there to answer tough questions and things like that, but what we really want is, we want the community, the community leaders to be the brand ambassadors because you all know your community best. And if you believe that community choice is, is a good choice for your community, then, you know, that's the, that's the imperative that we, that we fight for. And, you know, I think there was a lot of confusion and, about the Geozone, but we included the Geozone in this because we wanted to be transparent that we think that geothermal has a ton of potential and that we're already doing this and that if there's not alignment on the Geozone, then there probably is, is gonna be some misalignment, you know, on the board. And so, you know, to the, to the extent that the Geozone created some, some misunderstanding and stickiness and some concerns, I think it's better for all of us at this point. But I wanna say also that, you know, we're doing it in good faith. We are committed to building local renewables and clean power because they create good jobs because they cycle more money back into local economies and, and ultimately help bring down costs for, for the people we serve. So maybe someday we'll be back in contact and we can work together again. And if that day comes, I look forward to, to continuing the conversation. I really appreciate your consideration that you've given to this point and, and all the effort to, to learn about Sonoma Clean Power and what goes into community choice. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll bring it to council for questions at this time.
No, I mean, I have a discussion for later, but my, my question, I guess to Jeff would be, let's say we do, the board of supervisors reevaluates in a year or two years or whatever the case may be, how, how long would your feasibility study be valid for? Is, is it something that needs to repeat next year or is it a five-year timeframe? What, what does that look like?
I'll, I'll be candid. It's hard for me today to recommend that our board support another feasibility study unless we know with a very high degree of certainty Lake, Lake County is joining. These cost us between $40,000 and $50,000 each time we do them and about 300 staff hours on top of that. It costs me 15 to 20 trips to Lake County and that takes away from our core business. So what I think my, my advice to the supervisors today was, if you wanna raise your hand a fourth time, this is the fourth, this would be the fourth time to ask for service, please come and visit us. Please come and develop the relationship first and be really confident that you're invested in this. Because I think, I, the, the specifics of your question is that feasibility studies don't have a long shelf life. But the, the higher level answer is, I don't really want to recommend that my board entertain a fourth option on this without having a really different set of circumstances where Lake County is very clear they're in the driver's seat, they're in charge and they're, they're using us to implement their direction. I think this last go-round was a mistake because I think people in Lake County, when we ran around to all the town halls, felt that we were selling them something. And, and I think the reality is, is we're, we're financially better off if we don't serve Lake County. Let me just be really blunt. Lake County is not a financial benefit to SCP. But we saw a neighboring community that, that had real need and real value for its own purposes and we responded to that request. So I, I think in the, i- if this goes to a fourth round, I, I just ask that Lakeport can support us in making sure that we develop that relationship and, and come to Santa Rosa and visit us and hang out at a board meeting and please get to know us because I think that trust is critical. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. What I was hoping for was to, to hear, you know, next year, everything still applies. We still, that feasibility still works, but I, I understand where you're coming from. So thank you.
Any other questions from council?
And Madam Mayor, just, I did leave one important piece out in regards to my discussion, just, just so everyone's aware of this. Because it was a publicly noticed public hearing, we still will need to, you do the formal action, which I know you're about to do, but, you know, just, we wanna make sure that we, we do it as a public hearing and officially open and then, you know, officially close and then, you know, we come back for discussion. But I did, I left that inadvertently out of my discussion that, you know, we still do need to conduct this as a formal public hearing.
That's okay. We got you covered. It's all good. So if council has no questions at this time, we'll open it up now for a public comment, questions and comment from the public. Supervisor Rasmussen, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yeah, Brad Rasmussen, District 4 Supervisor. I had hoped we'd be in a different situation tonight because I actually was in support of moving forward with this, but there wasn't gonna be the support to bring a motion forward. So that's how it ended up transitioning to direction to staff to come back to us as soon as possible with looking at, are there any other options or where do we go from here? So my comment tonight would be that I agree with your city manager that I would think it'd be a good idea to direct your staff to continue to work with the county and stay in close contact with us on this and because I do feel like whatever we have coming back is gonna be pretty quick. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from people present in the room? Okay, do we have any hands raised online?
No.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for comments and discussion with the council.
Um, well, yeah, I'll go ahead. I, I just have to admit, it feels very disappointing to spend all this time and to be in the spot that we're in. I was so grateful for the opportunity because this is the type of thing that we beg for or we say, you know, why is Lake County, we wanna be included. Why aren't you asking us? Come to us for whatever different thing. And this was our opportunity. You know, the county did invite them and the timing was right. And I, I just feel like rural, small communities are really good at getting in their own way and this is a perfect example of that. I'm so thankful to Jeff and Sonoma Clean Power for all the time and expense. I hear the frustration. I can only imagine how frustrating it would be to, you know, put that offer out there and then, I, I just, I thought it would go so different. I recognize that it's a really difficult decision because there are gonna be unknowns and risks to do something like this for your community. It felt good knowing that community members would have a way to opt out. But that's our job to make those hard decisions when you see that it's something that could potentially really help an entire community. Just the fact, the advocacy that we could have gained from that, just having a phone number to call and say, hey, I'm looking at this solar project for my home. Can you tell me, is this a good idea? The amount of solar projects I see out there that are a complete waste of money, the amount of people that that could have helped alone would have been incredible. I think that CCAs are the future. They'll be the best path forward, especially for small areas. I absolutely hope that we continue to work towards a partnership. My fear is that this opportunity may not be there and it, it will be another thing to add to the list. So disappointed, but again, thank you, Jeff and Sonoma Clean Power and hopefully we will keep working forward.
Other comments?
I'll piggyback on that. I mean, I, I was really excited to give our residents another option besides PG&E. We hear all the time about how it's killing small businesses and sure, Sonoma Clean Power wouldn't cut the bill in half, but they're an option and we would have had a seat on the board that we don't have with PG&E. So I, I'm disappointed. I wish we were a, a larger city where we could just go at it ourself and not need the county support and the city of Clear Lake support. So Jeff and Sonoma Clean Power, if we, if we grow, you know, and add 100,000 people to our city, we'll let you know. But I, I liked the, the option and was really disappointed to hear how things transpired between Clear Lake and, and the board. So really hope to keep that line of communication open with Sonoma Clean Power and hopefully we can look at this again.
Councilmember Price Parlet?
You know, someone that's boots on the ground and has been for over 55 years dealing with customers on a daily basis, I can't say that I'm shocked because th- this kind of thing, like Councilmember Matina said, county getting in its own way, I have rarely ever heard any positive comments. All I've heard that businesses are about to go under. They're going under. They went under. My PG&E bill in one year went up 27% to $90,000. And it's like, you don't want competition? I mean, imagine one barber shop or one beautician or one department store. They can charge whatever they want and they seem to be having a very comfortable relationship with the CPUC. I saw this and as Councilmember Matina said, the advocacy alone, I don't even care if we save a dime. I mean, the way it's going now, it's just a matter of time till more businesses go out of business. And don't get me wrong, the people that work for PG&E locally, the guys that are out there in the worst weather, they're wonderful people. The management, in my opinion, is predatory and monopolistic and they're not supporting us. And how this did not get through is mind-boggling. I thought the presentations by Sonoma Clean Power were impeccable. It was very clear to me there was gonna be minimal risk. This is a huge multi, you know, million-dollar operation. It was wonderfully presented in every case. The answers were, were put out there. People had misunderstandings because of their level of intelligence. They weren't able to understand and he continually had to explain, no, that's not part of it. And we didn't reach out to tribes because it was a, a thing that's not included because of state law and all that kind of stuff. It seemed like a slam dunk to me. And I could not be more disappointed in the county and the city of Clear Lake. And I also can't believe that some councils would not sit quiet when there's intellectual intelligence on the board that's been there for, you know, more than a decade and with 150 years experience and to think in your first term that you know enough to overturn the entire county's opportunity for an option that we've never had and we've been begging for. It is so heartbreaking. I, I can't believe it. It's just, it's unbelievable to me that it, it went this way.
I agree with so much that has been said. I thought it was super well-presented, very thorough, lots of information, good information. And I, I think there's a trust issue. People, people are unclear of certain things and there's a trust issue. But I experienced the, the staff from Sonoma Clean Power to be very, they rang true every time. You didn't, you didn't deviate from, from being honest and from what you expressed about what it looked like to be a partner with you. And I found that very refreshing and, and absolutely believable. So yes, it takes a little bit of trust to go after this amazing product and opportunity that you were willing to come and present. And again, you, you know, so much of your own resources that went into that and, and I joined with my other council members that are disappointed that this didn't happen. I do wanna point out, I did, you know, we did have discussion about the tribal outreach, but just to clarify, that was very clear to me that, that there was a rock and a hard spot. You were kind of stuck in the middle of, you know, what was not required and therefore not really your, kind of not your place to pursue things in a certain way because what would, you know, where would that have gone? And what misunderstanding would that have garnered? And in thinking about it, this may not be accurate either, but, you know, my thoughts was that really the jurisdictions were probably the best people to reach out to the tribes that are within their jurisdiction to start that conversation. And then it's a matter of information and the tribes, like any other part, that community as well as the rest of the communities have the option to opt in and out individually and such. So I think, I don't know that it was really, given the constraints on your role, I don't know that you were the best beginners of that conversation. I think that maybe better up to the jurisdictions to invite the tribes. I think that maybe better up to the jurisdictions to invite the tribes, you know, be very assertive about their desire to meet and talk about it if we ever get the opportunity. And that is the sad part because we may never get the opportunity again. I hope that's not true. I'm glad to hear Supervisor Rasmussen offer the thought that the information may come back quickly from the county. I think we would all look forward to that and we would look forward to the opportunity to move forward in a way that works for your, on this issue, for your entity, for your organization as well as all of us here in Lake County. Looks like, did you have something to say?
Nope.
Okay, all right. So thank you so much for everything you've done and the manner in which you did it. And if we are fortunate enough to work with you in the future, we will be grateful for that opportunity. And now we need to figure out the action that we're going to officially take, is that correct?
Yeah, I, you know, I think there, there are a couple of ways of doing it. I mean, you, you can take formal action and you'll officially table the, the consideration. But you can also just, you'll provide kind of informal direction to staff as recommended to, to continue to, to work with Sonoma Clean Power and also with the county and their efforts in exploring alternatives and, and other potential actions.
And that comes in the form of a motion that...
It can just be consensus. You could formalize it and make it a motion that, that's really...
Can we just have that as part of our discussion? Is this sort of the direction people would like to go to get, kind of do something not unlike what the county did, to pause and let the more information come and stay in contact with the county? That'd be part of, as our staff continues to explore opportunities and information, they would be also reaching out, keeping that line of communication open with the county? Is that...
Well, I was going to say so moved to what Kevin said.
All that, okay. And then what?
He both.
Then I kept talking.
I'd recommend not making a motion in case this challenges an action that wasn't agendized. Let's keep it as informal direction. Otherwise, we can have a formal motion to table it, but let's not, let's keep it as a direction.
Perfect.
So the direction that...
They clearly have our direction.
Very good. So our city staff will continue to explore the options here and be in contact with the county of Lake, correct? Thank you. Thank you so much, Sonoma Clean Power. We appreciate you.
And I'm sorry.
It's embarrassing.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, council business. We have, we are being asked to authorize the city manager to execute amendments to extend the terms of 12 on-call agreements by one year. This appears to be the Public Works Director, Ron Lad, yes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Costa and council. This item is a request to extend our existing on-call consulting contracts for another year. As I'm sure you remember, the city established the on-call list in 2022. And over the last three years, we've utilized these contracts on, on quite a range of, of projects. Some of the notable ones are the 2024 Water and Sewer Main Replacement, the big underground project that was on consent, I believe, tonight for notice of completion, as well as the Martin and Lake Shore repaving project, the natural high environmental studies that we had to conduct in order to knock down the old natural high building, the navigation feasibility study, as well, I mean, there's many more across all departments that were utilized in this. This contract was originally set up for a three-year term with the option of the city to renew for one year twice, so three-year contract with two one-year options. Tonight's request simply authorizes the city manager to execute the first one-year extension for 12 of those firms. This keeps our consultant bench full so we can move quickly and not get logged down in the lengthy procurement process when an opportunity to lead a capital improvement project or submit a grant application becomes available.
Yeah, and I would just add, this has been, this has been a really great tool for us over the past few years. You know, being a small staff, you know, as, as Ron just, you know, alluded to, you know, it's really diversified our bench and, and given us a lot more opportunity to, to go out and get experts in a timely manner when we need them, to keep costs on projects going to keep, and probably more importantly, keeping timelines on, on projects moving forward. So this is, this has been a really great program.
Very good. Questions from council? Comments from the public? Questions or comments? None in the room? How about online?
No hands.
Bring it back for discussion or a motion?
I'd just like to comment that when I first saw this three years ago, I thought this was absolutely brilliant. I thought this was just the most excellent plan. And when you need somebody and you need them in a hurry and to go out and do some, you know, RFP or whatever, it's just not prudent. When I first saw this, I was just blown away at the brilliance of this. And so I heavily support continuing on with this. And I, I just think that this is just a sign of how well organized and well-run our city is, that they actually have this. And I love the sports analogy of having a big bench. Thank you.
I agree. I mean, it, it shows, I think, what a small but mighty staff can do with being creative and having all these on-call consultants. I, I wasn't here in the 2022, you know, the original RFQ, but it makes total sense. And just the examples that you've given show how successful having these on-call consultants are.
Madam Mayor, and just to add to that, I am grateful because there are cities and counties that refuse to do creative things like this. So it's a huge benefit to us and kudos for doing it. There's nothing else. I'll make a motion to authorize city manager to execute agreed amendments to extend the terms of 12 on-call agreements by one year.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
The next up is with the Finance Director. We, it's a budget amendment to adopt the resolution to amend the annual budget for fiscal year 2526 to authorize the transfer and appropriation of unreserved fund balance.
Thank you, Mayor Costa and members of the council. So it has been determined that storm drainage improvements are necessary to be completed on 10th Street in the current fiscal year. This was not originally included in the budget, but funds have been identified as unreserved fund balance in Fund 401 titled 10th Street Drainage that have been accumulating for exactly this purpose. It's now prudent to transfer those funds to the Storm Drainage Fund to complete that work in the current fiscal year.
Very good. Do we have questions from council? No. Comments from the public? No one in the room? How about online?
I've got no hands.
Okay, let's bring it back for any comments, discussion or a motion. I have one. We love when our water is draining well, so thanks. Thanks for doing that. Anyone else?
No, if there's nothing further, Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt the resolution to amend the annual budget for fiscal year 202526 to authorize the transfer and appropriation of the unreserved fund balance.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Next item is also the Finance Director. The fourth quarter financial reports. We are asked to review and file the fourth quarter 2425 financial update.
So I will keep this brief with just a, a broad overview of both the status of the city's investments as well as a summarization of the unaudited financial statements for our three major funds, which are the General Fund, our Water Operating and Maintenance Fund, and the Sewer Operating and Maintenance Fund. Starting with the investments, as laid out in the staff report, there's a detailed schedule of each of the CDs, the certificates of deposits as of June 30th, 2025, including the accrued interest and balance for those. In total, for General Fund, the CDs were at $1,213,913.57. And on the wastewater side, those CD investments had a total balance of $1,226,494.75. Moving down to the total concentration percentages of the overall citywide cash investments, the highest concentration, of course, is in the demand deposits in the checking account at 61.65%. The second largest concentration is the amount of investments held within LAIF, which is with the State of California Treasurer, the concentration there being 17.4% and a total fair value of $2,984.153. And then the next highest concentration, of course, being those certificates of deposit, which I previously mentioned. And the last area of investments that we have is in the Section 115 Trust for Future Pension Obligations held in pars with a fair value of $1,154,489. Sorry, $1,154,489 with a total concentration of 6.73%. Quickly going over to the attachment and the detailed information for General Fund. We did close the year with actually receiving more revenue than was originally estimated in the amount of $815,707. Sorry, $815,707 that was received over what was originally estimated there. Expenditures did come in under budget, which is a good thing. The combination of those two resulted in an overall positive change to fund balance for General Fund of $893,781, which is a good place to end our fiscal year for General Moving over to the Water Fund. I did note that in the operations category, there was a slight overage in what was originally anticipated to be expended. And the result of that was mostly associated with parts and supplies for outside services. There were several water line repairs that were done in the last fiscal year, as well as some unforeseen emergencies associated with the SCADA controls at the water treatment Those overages were anticipated in 2526 and those budget adjustments were made. So those appropriations were increased for the current fiscal year. Moving over to the Sewer Fund. Again, there was an overage in operations and that was largely due to increased pumping of flows to Laco Sand due to having a very wet year, as well as some increased chemical costs. And again, those budget adjustments were accounted for in the fiscal year 2526 budget to ensure that those overages do not occur again. That is all of the summarization I have. There are any questions? Be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions from council?
I just wanted to state once again, I, you know, appreciative of Danielle. She's hit the ground running in her, her short time. It's not easy. The fourth quarter is, you know, all of our closing and everything on the, the fiscal year. And, you know, so she, she came in to it, you know, pretty, pretty late in the, in the game of things, but has done a, a very good job, you know, very near completion with our, with our end of year audit and stuff. And I think you're going to get our first quarter financials pretty soon as well. So just how that goes. But thank you to Danielle for all of her hard work.
Absolutely.
Great job.
And she's still here. That's cool.
Keeping us all on track. She knows how to say no to the other directors too, which is also very appreciative.
Okay, questions? No questions from council? We'll go to comments or questions from the public in the room?
That's true.
Great. Any hands raised online?
No.
Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion or a motion?
Just receive and file, I think.
Oh, thank you so much for that reminder. Yes, indeed. Thank you, Danielle. Well done. Okay, that brings us down to the City Council Communications. And we'll start with Joey Hanowitz, the Community Development Director.
Yeah, nothing to report this evening, Mayor?
Chief Stobie?
I have none.
Okay. Paul Harris?
No.
Great. Danielle Dizon, do you have any more to report?
Nothing further to report.
Kelly Buendita, Buendia, where did that come from?
Extra syllables. No report.
Ron Lad?
Thank you, Mayor Costa. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Linda, I don't know your last name.
So, Brian. I'm, I've got nothing to report either.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mackenzie?
I do have a brief informational update. This is sort of a warning of what's to come next year. There was a bill signed last week that is going to increase some of your ethic training obligations. And some of you department heads as well are now going to be subject to AB 1234 ethics trainings. There's also going to be a new two-hour training component for you all about fiscal and financial training. And this is set to cover financial administration, fiscal management, capital financing and debt management, pensions, benefits and investments. So good idea and on topic with our last agenda item. And you all will have to complete this training by January 1st, 2028, and then every two years thereafter. So it's modeled after your AB 1234 ethics trainings. You'll just have an extra one coming about finances. So just a heads up.
I think those sound like great opportunities and I think we're all looking forward to ethical lift. Thank you. All right.
Danielle, maybe?
City Manager Kevin Ingram?
Nothing major to report. I did, I just want to put it out there, we did complete some pretty large capital improvement projects, you know, over the, the course of, since we last saw you. I know, it wasn't on this one, but I know there, oh, yes, it is. I mean, you'll note that on the consent agenda tonight, there was the notice of completion of the pipeline project, which has been going on for, was a very large project going on for a couple of years. So congratulations to Paul, we finished that up. And then on, on top of that, literally, we were able to put asphalt on, on a couple of primary roadways there in, in Lake Shore and Martin. And that on, and in, in addition to the work that we did on Main Street earlier, really has been a huge difference. We missed you guys over, it's been a while since we got a chance to meet, but I'll let council kind of cover anything in regards to the Cal Cities Conference.
Thank you. Councilmember Matina?
Well, we had a very successful Cal Cities Conference. We had our Redwood Division meeting and swore in our new officers. The educational sessions were excellent. There were a lot of sessions about unruly council meetings. So I think we should be very grateful that we have very professional, basically quiet meetings. But also there's been a lot of city councils and, and people attending them where it's so crazy that staff is retiring early and quitting in record numbers. So we are very grateful and lucky here. And we, the networking was great. We, it included some great time with some of the members from City of Clear Lake. So that was great. That's my two cents. Sure, you guys have something more?
Councilmember Disney? Or Pro Tem, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, so the Cal Cities Conference was great. We did have to skip the LCRA meeting in order to attend. So looking forward to that next month. But one session I really enjoyed at Cal Cities was involving the youth in your community more. So I want to work on better outreach with the high school and student council and that kind of stuff. But I agree with Councilmember Matina, it was great sessions and networking. It was a successful conference. Also, I love this time of year in Lakeport because there's so many events. There's the Harvest Festival, we've got Halloween coming up, National Night Out was a big, big success. So it's just a fun, festive time of year around here. And that's my report.
Yep. Councilmember Parlet? Yep. Councilmember Prillette?
Yeah, I want to thank the City of Lakeport and the citizens that helped fund that trip, and it was extremely worthwhile. I thought it was of note, kind of important that while we just said that we had a balanced budget, I was, I'm never shocked anymore, but I was kind of surprised to see so many cities that were up there that really needed like another penny or two or five cents to become, they were like in the red by millions of dollars, and they actually had a couple of sessions that were related on how to tell the story that your city is going broke, and consequently, if you don't pass the sales stack thing, maybe they won't be here. So it was very, very worthwhile, the networking was outstanding. The keynote speakers were excellent, and if you didn't hear, we got to hear Aaron Brockovich, and that was the final presentation. But the other thing I wanted to say that, lastly, is that the staff report regarding Sonoma Clean Power and so many of the other staff reports have just been absolutely amazing, and I want to give staff credit for the great job they do. Anybody that read our staff report could not possibly vote against Sonoma Clean Power. It was so well-done and detailed, but yet still concise and not too long. So kudos to the staff.
Good. Councilmember Price?
Nothing too lengthy. I will point or mention Pro Tem Disney. I have an email out to Superintendent Bullard, as well as Crystal Patrick, who you gave me her contact info. She's going to Ontario this week for some community engagement type of conference. So hopefully, we can put our minds together and hook up with the, with the schools and get the youth going, especially I want to find out what their plans are for their winter breaks and see if maybe there could be something we could do for them, or have some type of day class or camp. Anyway, nothing too much to report. We did, I did have an LMSA meeting. They did have their Harvest Festival. That was a success, and their next thing that they'll be doing is the Dickens Day festival, and I'll have more details on that when it gets closer. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I want to reference also the Cal Cities event. I think it's really helpful when we sort of disperse into the different offerings that are there, the different workshops. One that I was super interested in was a legal workshop where it was being highlighted, what I'll frame as the tension between the California's laws to develop housing and the mandates there, the tension with now California's mandates about dealing with your wildfire risk, and those two things are recognized as being sort of in tension with one another, and how do you move forward with that? So that's something that I, hopefully, our attorney will be looking into that area, or, you know, poking around to see what's being developed to help us when we have projects that are brought in front of us. There were some specific recommendations about how you, what you can do to stay within the housing mandate laws, but to have some ability to actually evaluate well the wildfire risk, given that we've got the, you know, high severity, very high severity zones, et cetera. So I thought that was super helpful. And I think it is probably, it's my personal opinion that it's in our best interest to be trying to get ahead of that, because some of the, there was a couple of cities, I believe it was Orinda and Lafayette, I think, no, Maraga and, and Orinda, and they, the cities were sued by resident groups that had the wherewithal to bring those suits, and the residents prevailed in a couple of these suits that were had to do with the city not ensuring that adequate consideration was given to evacuation plans. They did no modeling, that sort of thing. So those kinds of what maybe have been best practice considerations in the past are now getting more teeth, and I don't know that our little city is going to have citizens groups that are going to organize with that kind of resource, but I think it's still, I think it's appropriate for us to listen to the message that the court is sending when they rule on something like that, and that we can use that so that we know that we're being as careful as we can when we look at the projects that might come our way. So I'm gonna pair that a little bit with my next one. It's gonna sound like they don't go together, but got a picture from the West Side Park people, you know, friends of West Side Park. So out there at the park, there's this big giant circle where some people were out there, you know, just with some vehicle, and they just burned a bunch of circles into the soccer field and ruined the field for people. So why do I see those as sort of relevant? I don't know. It's because as we grow, that's an area of current development. 64 units are being, they're breaking ground on that, you know, a lot of work is going on out there. We've got three homes, additional homes ready for sale. So, and then there's 176 slated for that area. So that conservatively, if it's just say three children per unit, if you say that, it's about, about 200 kids being added when those first 64 get built. If you fill them all up, you've got 600 or more kids. So there's gonna be more and more action out there, and currently there is no second egress. There's only this one particular way to go in and out, and I'm bringing that up to say as we look forward to and understand that that is a desirable location for developers, and there's already development planned there. We do still have high fire risk. We have, there's gonna be more action, more people out there in that sort of quiet area at night. It's a dead end, and without people paying attention to it, I think, you know, more things could, I think we should expect that more things will likely develop, and we should, and that is just one way I think we should be looking ahead when we're saying development will happen. What are all those other things we would like our city to be prepared for when that development happens? And I believe it deals with this whole fire versus housing laws, but it also deals with how do we anticipate some of the social challenges that we might have and, and keep the park, for example, a safe place, put some lighting in, et cetera, et cetera. I think those are good questions for us to wrestle with. So that's, that's my thought on that today. And actually, that's, that's, oh, and then on the youth thing, I know that it's still kind of just being talked about. I don't think the seaplane people have submitted their application, but they're talking very hard about having this event. They're talking as if they're planning to have it in June of 2026, and they want to focus on that a lot of how do you involve the youth. So that might be another group to be looking at if they actually come forward with their application and such about how to do that. All right.
And I had one thing. I just wanted to point out that I had, I was a huge supporter of Prop 36, and I went to that session, and while the voters passed it at 70%, because we had Prop 37, Prop 57, AB 109, all the realignment and all the crime was running rampant, and we passed Prop 36, but conveniently turns out that I think the number was 115 million to implement it over 59 counties, which is just, it's kind of like saying, yeah, you guys passed it, but we don't care, because there's so much reporting, and there's clinicians, and there's diversion programs, and it's, it looks like for any city, it's an expensive undertaking, and a lot of people are shying away from it. So that was a very huge disappointment when an overwhelming supermajority of the state people have been, literally have their back turned on them by the state government, and I was very upset about that, because anybody who's seen the safe way or any of the different, you know, the closing of the Walgreens and Rite Aid's gone and different things like that, it's really a shame that when we speak, that once above this level of city government, everything seems to, you know, kind of fall apart. And I do want to say, it was very invigorating to see 3,000 people all dedicated to raising the level of their personal cities, while I feel that just a notch or two above, it seems like they're just crashing down on our autonomy and our freedom of choice and our liberties and not helping us with crime and other things. So it was great to be around those positive people, but it doesn't forebode well when everybody up a couple notches doesn't seem to care, and so that, that was the bad news. So sorry about that.
On that note, thank you. It's true, though. I was, I was in that same workshop. It's frustrating. So that concludes our City Council Communications, and the last item is Closed Session, conference with Labor Negotiator, Government Code 54957.6. City Negotiator Mackenzie Anderson, Unrepresented Employee City Manager. Though there is no detail here, do we still open that up for comments? All right, we have comments from the public? Anybody in the room?
No hands.
No hands. All right. Thank you. So we'll break out for a closed session now.